I told you just really get low. Get in there and just go right off after school.
You what?
I said, that's what you do, just go off from there to school board. First time. Have them read, friends and influence people. I did the same thing.
Hey, I'm learning guys. Me and Mr. Philippiers, new kids on the block, we're learning. Right, Phil? We're new kids on the block, we're learning.
It's fun.
I'll call as Carroll County Board of Supervisors out of closed session back into open session and will entertain the motion to certify that we only spoke of what we were intended to speak on earlier.
Make a motion, we return from closed session and certify that we spoke only those issues we made motion before we went into closed session.
I have a motion that we, for us to return or for us to certify that we only spoke on A1, A5, and A8. And I'm looking for a second.
Make a second.
Any other discussion? We'll start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. If we all rise for our pledge of invocation, please. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you for this day that you've provided for us. Thank you for the many blessings that you've cast down upon us. We ask that you be with us during our meeting and do business in a proper manner and do the work to build this county and make it stronger and the work that you have us to do. Lord, we ask you to be with each and every one of us, watch over and protect us as we travel upon our ways, bring us back at our next appointed time, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's good to see everyone here tonight. Hope everyone's had a good day so far and everything's going well. Seek approval for our agenda, please.
I'm making motion, we approve the consent agenda.
No, just the regular agenda.
The regular agenda.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that there'd be two minor changes to the agenda. Change number one is the item of historical society computer discussion. The broad ask if that be removed until next year. So you discuss it when it's here. The second change would be is that a portion of citizens' time would be moved up to follow directly after the presentation by Mr. Shulman from CenturyLink so that an interactive discussion can occur on some of those issues.
Yes, sir. I have an issue with that.
I'll make a motion, include those changes.
I have a motion that we accept the approval of the agenda as with the noted changes. I have a second, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. And start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, but I would like to move the resolutions out and if...
Have them read.
Have them read, if that would be okay.
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with removal of the three resolutions and have them read. And we can do that. If I have a second, please.
A second?
Have a second. Any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Do you want to go ahead and do those resolutions now and get that?
Sure.
Okay.
The first resolution is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Carroll County authorizing the submission of certain transportation projects for Virginia's smart scale funding. And the resolution reasons follows. Whereas pursuant to the smart scale funding process, the Virginia General Assembly has created a means of funding proposed transportation projects across the Commonwealth that is based on scoring criteria that emphasizes safety, accessibility, environmental quality, and economic development, here and after referred to as the smart scale process. And whereas Carroll County desires to submit local transportation projects for potential funding under the smart scale process, and whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors supports the submission of the following local transportation project for potential funding under the smart scale process, improvements to the interchange at the area of exit one of both sides of Route 620 and along Interstate 77. Now therefore being resolved by the Carroll County Board of Supervisors, that we approve the submission of the above-mentioned transportation project for funding under the smart scale process. And being further resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby authorizes the county administrator to file the above application through the smart scale process online portal on or before the application deadline. The next one. I just wanted to put this. You have it all?
Oh. It's my last one.
It's as far as they're going.
Resolutions, Mr. Shulman?
Uh, the next one, the bridge is in the resolution. Sorry.
You're fine.
This resolution concerns the bridge naming on Freeze Road over the New River in Carroll County as the Dixon Ferry Bridge. Whereas members of the Dixon family have lived on the New River since 1835, members of the Dixon family operated the Dixon Ferry until it was flooded in 1940. The bridge was constructed in 1950 and no signage has been placed on the structure since construction. Whereas Section 33.2-213 of the Code of Virginia authorizes the Commonwealth Transportation Board to give suitable names to state highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities, and change the names of many highways, bridges, interchanges, or other transportation facilities forming a part of the system of state highways. And whereas Section 32-213 provides that the Virginia Department of Transportation shall place and maintain appropriate signs indicating the names of highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities named by the CTV, and requires that the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining such signs shall be paid by the localities in which they are located. Now therefore be it resolved that Carroll County, in accordance with the requirements of Section 33.2-213 of the Code of Virginia, does hereby request that the Commonwealth Transportation Board name the bridge on Freeze Road over the New River in Carroll County as the Dixon Ferry Bridge. Being further resolved, that Carroll County agrees to pay the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining the signs calling attention to this name. Now, how do I close this? Here, I'll just work on. Lastly, this is a resolution to support sales tax revenue for school construction and improvement. Whereas in 2013, the Virginia General Assembly approved a sales tax increase in certain localities for infrastructure development from 5.3% to 6% to relieve traffic congestion and making available billions of dollars in local funding for infrastructure. And whereas Virginia collects 5.3% of sales tax with 1% going to the locality, and whereas school buildings needs in many Virginia localities, including Carroll County, have become as acute a problem as traffic congestion is in northern Virginia and Hampton Roads. And whereas the Virginia Senate has recognized the need for school buildings and developed a committee chaired by State Senator William Stanley to address obsolete buildings. And whereas rural localities in general lack an adequate tax base to support and fund major capital needs. And whereas school children living in rural areas of Virginia should not be at a disadvantage as compared to other localities in attending safe, healthy school buildings. And whereas Virginia Delegate James Edmonds has recognized that the local needs in Carroll County public schools align with the needs of many localities across the Commonwealth. And whereas the funding of capital projects constricts local and school system operating funding and infringes on money for teacher pay and public safety. And whereas state sales tax dollars invested in local construction projects would make available more local dollars to invest in the operation of schools, including more competitive teacher pay and meeting other pressing needs. And whereas sales tax revenues specifically earmarked for school funding would allow a locality to spend local property tax dollars on such vacant areas as public safety, school operating budgets, and refuse collection and disposal. And whereas sales tax revenues specifically designated for school infrastructure funding should not be counted towards the local required effort for educational funding. And whereas it is in the interest of having a thriving public education system that any enabling legislation guarantees the localities cannot supplant funding from the school's operational budgets with respect to local required effort if new revenues generated from a school infrastructure sales tax. And whereas state enabling legislation is legally required for additional sales tax, which would be expressly dedicated to public school capital project funding. And whereas each locality should obtain the support of its community by way of a referendum approving any local sales tax increase for school improvement and construction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carroll, that the County of Carroll, Virginia does hereby resolve and express its support and desire for the Virginia General Assembly to enact such legislation as it is necessary to prevent localities to charge additional sales tax, conditioned upon a local referendum approving such a sales tax, with the revenue generated thereby being returned to the localities for the express and exclusive purpose of providing funding for public school capital improvement and building purposes, with no dilution of local required effort towards educational operational funding. Once a project for which a referendum is held and approved is completed and all attended debt satisfied by the increased sales tax and other available resources, revenue sources, excuse me, the additional sales tax would cease to be charged.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a motion for us to accept those resolutions or approve those resolutions?
I'm gonna make the motion, approve those three resolutions.
Do I have a second, please?
One second.
Having a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on the resolutions? Not? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is CenturyLink. And we have Rich Skolman with CenturyLink here to speak with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Rich Shulman. I've got, wanted to share some information with you about kind of where CenturyLink is, what we've been doing, kind of the changes that have been happening. I've been, and part of my role, I speak with a lot of the county, county boards. I work very closely with legislators here in Virginia and a bunch of other states. And so I think a common question I get from localities is what can we do as a locality to help bring broadband to our communities? So I've got some thoughts there that I thought I'd share as well and obviously answer any questions that you, that you have. Just a little background on me, just so you know where I'm coming from. I've been with CenturyLink for the past 12 years, but I've been in the telecom space for the past 20 years. Used to be a regulatory lawyer for AT&amp;T. I've spent some time with American Electric Power. Ran the State's Cable Association and worked for Comcast. And as I said, it's just been the last 12 years that I've worked for, for CenturyLink. I do our government affairs work here in Virginia, which is mostly the regulatory and the legislative work. So I spend a lot of time with people like Sandra Carico and a lot of folks from the rural parts of Virginia. But I also kind of taken the lead on all of our broadband projects, especially where we're looking for state grant funding. So I'm very familiar with those and have done a number of those. I will tell you though, I am not an engineer, although I am staying at the Hampton Inn close by here tonight. A little bit about CenturyLink. So when I came on board in 2006, literally the day I joined the company, we were Sprint. And we were a wireless company with kind of this landline company that we had as well. And Sprint decided in their, in their infinite wisdom that they would split us off and they would take the wireless side. And they created a new company called Embark that was focused just on local landline service. Well, since that spinoff that happened in 2006, our company has acquired Quest, which was the major telecom company in the Midwest and western part of the United States. And last November, we acquired a company called Level 3, which is a very large global provider of mostly large business and government telecom needs. So in the U.S., we provide local service like we do here in Carroll County to 37 states, but we operate in all of the states. And we're actually the second largest U.S. provider to global businesses and customers in 60 countries around the world. I share all of that because when I joined in 2006, people thought of the company as a small local telephone company, and the company has changed dramatically since that time. On the broadband side, we provide service almost totally using DSL is the name of our, the technology that we use. So DSL uses those existing copper lines to go from a device that's in, for instance, a neighborhood, and it uses the existing copper lines to get out to the homes. So DSL has traditionally had a reputation of being the slow service. It is slower than fiber, but at the same time, I have to tell you that we are doing much faster speeds over DSL to the point where if we have upgraded a device, we can do 80 to 100 meg if you're close to that device. The speeds drop is obviously as you get further away from, from our, from our devices. In order to provide the kind of speeds that you'd have to do to get those speeds out everywhere, you'd have to do fiber. And you'd have to do either fiber to the devices or you'd have to do fiber actually to the homes. And that's the real expensive part of the business really is getting, getting fiber out. So I'll talk a little bit about our CAF program in a minute where we've gotten fiber out to devices. But I don't know of anybody that's been able to make a go, a successful go of getting fiber to the home in rural areas. And to be honest with you, that's mostly where my company serves. CenturyLink provides service from Front Royal to Bristol and across South Side, Virginia to South Hill. But we don't, we don't have the big urban areas. We don't have Richmond, we don't have Hampton Roads, we don't have Virginia Beach area, we don't even have Roanoke. Our urban area in Virginia is Charlottesville, and Charlottesville folks don't like to consider themselves urban. So anyway, that's, that's, that's the part that we are dealing with is how to get to those homes that are currently unserved. And there are two kinds of places where we're, where we're unserved. Just want to explain those a minute so that folks understand what they are. So the one kind of place is maybe you're a phone customer from our, of ours, but the device that serves your neighborhood hasn't been upgraded with a fiber line to it. So you may not have broadband where you are because of that. So the, the cost then, in order to get broadband to you is going to be taking, getting a fiber line back from our long haul network out to that device. The second kind, which are actually the ones that are even a little more difficult to do and a little more troubling for all of us, is even if you are at that, there's a device that has fiber to it and we have broadband there, if you're more than about three miles out, you're not going to be able to get broadband from us. It's just the signal gets so weak once you get past, once you get to the three mile mark that you're now talking about speeds at like 1.5 meg. 1.5 meg used to be really good broadband. We built a lot of networks here and around South Side and Southwest Virginia. We built those, you know, in the last eight years, but that was before Netflix, before all the streaming video. And streaming video consumes about half of the bandwidth today that, that is out there. So, you know, we built those 1.5 speed networks, but now people have a hard time with 1.5. They want, you know, 5 meg, 10 meg, 100 meg is the kind of speeds that people are looking for now. So again, so the point was there are two areas where we have, where we don't have broadband. One is going to be a device that isn't fiber fed generally, those are not going to have broadband. And the others are the folks that live more than three miles out from a device are going to have a hard time with, with getting broadband from us. So for CenturyLink, we've, we've gotten all the, call it the low hanging fruit, the places that are easy to do, the places where it's easy to make a business case. But what, so part of my job has been to try to find ways to improve the business case for us to be able to reach some of those, some of those places. So I've done project, I go out and try and find projects anywhere I can, whether they're federal projects or whether they're state projects. So the two that I've had particularly good success with are projects using the State's Department of Housing and Community Development projects and also working some projects through the Tobacco Commission. So we actually did four projects, about $2 million total with the Tobacco Commission to get broadband to about 8,000 locations, and that's all of South Side, Virginia. And we did those using Tobacco Commission grants at about 50/50 was the grant versus our contribution that we had to make to those. And then I've also done projects, as I said, through the State's Department of Housing and Community Development. The state had put, I think it was $2 million into it previously, and they have just increased those amounts to $4 million each year for two years, so a total of $8 million that's going to be, going to be used on broadband projects. So those are the state projects. The state is actually, they were meeting today, so I missed their meeting because I was on the road to come here, but I, but they are finalizing the guidelines for that $8 million of how they want to spend it. And one of the problems that we have had in dealing with those funding programs is they, they want to be aggressive, they're all about what's the biggest bang for the buck. And if you sit in their meetings, that's what they're talking about. So I actually met with them last week and I said, look, for us, the big problem is the customers out there who live three miles out, the customers who live in places where it just costs too much to get fiber to that local device. And these aren't going to be the biggest bang for the buck kind of homes, but these are the people who need the broadband. And, and they also don't necessarily care about having 50 meg speed. They'd be happy getting 10 one, 10, 10 meg down, 1 meg up speeds, but you all are interested in doing things that are much bigger with much faster broadband. And I just haven't had any success. So one of the things that I'll ask when I talk about some, some things that I, that I think would help the folks here who don't have broadband is that we somehow need to get the word to the folks in Richmond that the place where we ought to be looking, the places that we really ought to be looking at are the places that don't have any broadband today. And we shouldn't be worried about getting the biggest bang for the buck as the most number of people. We ought to be looking at, at the places where we need broadband and spending money in those kinds of places. So that's been part of my challenge dealing with the state on that. The last program that I wanted to mention was the, it's called the Connect America Fund. So a number of years ago, the feds took all of the money that used to go to companies to support voice networks, they took all that money away from us and, which has caused its own problems. But they used that money and created a multi-billion dollar broadband fund. And so in, in Virginia, the major providers are, the major rural providers are CenturyLink and Verizon. Verizon did not take money, CenturyLink did take, did take the money. And what the money did is it allow, it allows us to partner using federal money to reach 50,000 homes in Virginia over the course of six years. And the program will end in 2020. And so by 2020, we get a certain amount of money each year, and each year we have targets that we have to meet to reach those 50,000 homes. So as of the end of last year, we had a requirement to get to 20,000 homes in Virginia with 10 one speeds. And so I have a map here I can, that I pulled up, kind of hard to see the yellow boundaries of the county, but these show you the locations in Carroll County where we have gotten, where we have upgraded to 10 one speeds using that Connect America Fund. Now, there's some language down there that I can see, but it's going to be hard for you to read from where you are, but what those reddish areas are, are those are what's called the census blocks. The feds decided when they, when they created this program that they were going to fund things by census block, which has no relationship to the real world like our exchange boundaries or anything else. It's just what the census people use. So in those shaded areas, we have broadband somewhere in those census blocks. So it doesn't necessarily mean that every single part of that shaded area has broadband in it, but that'll tell you, that'll tell you the areas. And I think like most of the counties that we are in, they're pretty much spread out. I think probably all of your, your districts are included with some amount of, of build out in, in there. And our total number is 1,402 was the number of locations that we have done so far. And that's probably, I mean, I've done this presentation or top of the folks at Grayson, Washington County, and that's about the same. It's been about somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000 in each of the counties. And we serve, I think we serve 30 counties all the way up to, you know, up to Rappahannock County, and, and we've done about the same amount in each of those areas. What I wish I could tell you, but I can't because we don't know yet is, so we've done 20,000, we've got another 30,000 to go before, before 2020. And what the company does is they, they look and they decide where it makes the most sense to go. What's the best business case to go? So, you know, you look at those, I'm not really familiar with this, but my guess is the areas that you're seeing the shaded are probably the areas of the more populated parts of the county, which is the place where it makes more sense for, for us to go. So over the next, what, two years, we'll be finishing out the build out to get to the, to the 50,000 homes. I wish I could tell you that I know Carroll County is going to have some of those locations, but I just don't know because the company hasn't, you know, those decisions are made like six months out from when the actual construction begins. And there are a lot of other factors that go into play like, you know, weather and trying to do jobs in common areas to save costs and those kinds of things. But I'm, I probably can get you all the information that, it's going to become publicly available here shortly, that'll actually have the locations for every single one of those, those places. The other thing that I, I have to admit is that we, our company is not particularly good at getting the word out when we have upgraded an area. So you may get, you know, if you get a paper bill, there's probably an insert in your, in your bill that tells you, hey, great news, we've got 10 one speeds available there. My guess is most of the people that are sitting back here are like me, I never read a bill insert when I open up my mail. So they, you know, you may not know, and the only way you, you would know is if you happen to call in or one of your neighbors knows and says, hey, I can get faster broadband speeds. But again, 10 one is, is the, the speeds that we're providing under the CAF program, and we actually have to certify to the FCC the, the actual locations where we're providing that, that 10 one service. One of the strange twists is that although we're providing speeds at 10 one, the FCC, after they gave us this grant money, has decided that they're going to call broadband 25 three. So it's 25 down, three up, much, much faster than, than 10 one speeds, especially on, on the upload side. And, you know, I, I think most people would tell you faster is better. I live in Richmond, we have 50/50, 75/50 available to us, to us there. And obviously, over time, as we move more and more applications, telemedicine, all those kinds of things, we're going to need more, we're going to need more bandwidth. That's really what it's going to come, come down to. And the only way to do that is getting more, for us, is getting fiber closer out to where the customers are. So I didn't want to spend too much more time, but the last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, I always get the question from localities, what, what can we do to help bring broadband to, to our constituents? The first one is we need help making the business case. Like I said, we've, we've done all the low hanging fruit. These projects cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Most of the time when, when I get a call from folks to take a look at them, the, the return on investment is 15 to 20 years. And we're just, you know, as a business, we're not going to, we're not going to build a project where it's going to take 15 or 20 years to get the initial investment back. So the, the best way to help make the business case is partnering to be able to tap into some of those some of those, uh, state funds. I've done them with Albemarle County, I've done them with some other counties as well, uh, and we've, and, uh, the Tobacco Commission grants that we did, uh, long ago, I think we probably got to maybe 10 counties, uh, and got programs done and got people faster broadband. I will tell you though, from the Tobacco Commission side, um, they are more interested in much faster speeds, and that's where they're putting their money. So we did not get a project out of the Tobacco Commission this last round. I think you all may have done some projects with the Tobacco Commission, maybe on the wireless side and had more luck there. And that's kind of my second point is, you know, speaking just as a, a citizen of, of the, of this Commonwealth, I recognize that we may not be the answer for a lot of your areas. If they're really, really rural, it may be that wireless is the answer. And, you know, you ought, you all ought to be looking at all of the different options that are out there to be able to reach, uh, reach some of those folks. TV white space is the latest thing, although I, I worked on that project 15 years ago when I was with, uh, with, with, uh, American Electric Power and, uh, but Microsoft is now behind that. And maybe with Microsoft working it, maybe they can do some more investment be, to be able to get to places that, that we wouldn't be able to get to. And the last one is, um, as I mentioned before, is setting reasonable broadband speeds. You, when I was at this meeting of, with the, uh, with the state last week, I said, you know, for the places that we serve that have nothing, they would rather have 10 one tomorrow than to wait 10 years or whenever the magic technology comes that gives them 25.3, because I don't, I don't see how that happens in the near term. So as much as people would love to have the fastest speed possible, you know, I drove, when I drove through here this afternoon, this is a beautiful, beautiful county, but it's pretty rural, and the terrain is particularly difficult, uh, as I was driving down. And, uh, so, you know, you've, you've, you've got to make a, you've got to make a decision, what's more important, getting something now that helps or waiting on something else that, you know, who knows if, when it's going to come and what the price is going to be? So, anyway, I, I hope I wasn't too preachy, but I thought I'd at least give you, uh, my impressions of, of what's going on and my experience. Glad to answer any questions you have. Oh, I did fail to mention one thing that, um, I am not particularly pleased about having to talk about and, uh, but I, but I, but I have to. Earlier in the spring, the company, um, moved to a new dispatch system, which we use to send out our technicians to do repair work. And, um, it is particularly bad, I will say. Um, they're doing a lot of work on it. Originally, the system was designed so that when customers would call in, they would actually get two hour windows of when we were going to show up to do the work. Well, unfortunately, the system has not been working the way it's supposed to. Um, I deal with the State Corporation Commission on a daily basis, updating them as to what's going on. I've got three vice presidents that are going to be on a phone call with me tomorrow with the State Corporation Commission, explaining what's going on and what we're doing to fix it. So there are some customers who are out of service who call us, and when they get through, they're told it'll be 30 days before somebody can come and fix their phone line. And we all know, if you're somebody who lives in, uh, the rural parts of this county, you may not have a cell phone, and you're not going to be able to call 911. So we recognize that those folks have to be given the top priority for getting their services restored. So what I've been doing on a daily basis, and as I was driving down here this afternoon, was we get reports of those that are, that where somebody has been told that, you know, their, their restoration's going to take three weeks to happen. And I physically call the dispatch people and say, "This one needs to be moved up, we need to get to this today or tomorrow," especially if it's a medical issue. So, um, what I've, what I've suggested is, you know, if, if you, if those kinds of issues, you hear about those kinds of issues with somebody that's got, um, you know, an urgent need or they're out of service, uh, they have no cell phone service, then, um, you know, please get the word to, to Stephen, he'll get to, get those to me, and I will get those to the front of the line immediately. That, I'm doing it all over the state until we can get this dispatch system fixed. So, I mean, I have to, I honestly publicly apologize for the, the, the poor service that folks are having to see because of that dispatch system, and we're doing everything we can to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we've probably got some citizens that want to have something they want to say and, uh, express concerns to you, so I think we have a sign up sheet specifically for this section, so we'll get that. I'll, I'll call you as, as you're listed here and ask, if you will, to try to keep your comments to about three minutes, please. Uh, the first one I have is Mary Ann McCracken.
Do I need to come up?
Yes, please, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
It's okay. You just touched base on what my problem was. Uh, where I live, um, I, I get no cell service, and I'm on oxygen, and, uh, I was told three weeks, four weeks. And my problem was that I still got a bill for the same amount, but yet I had 29 days within a month and a half period that I had no service. So I'm being charged for, um, you know, call waiting, uh, messages, and, uh, I don't see why I have to continue to pay that when my phone is not working. And the division, the subdivision I live in, um, there's a lot of people there that they have to have a landline, such as I, because we have no cell service. And it, that's just unacceptable, three weeks for, to get a repair. Um, so that's my big issue that I have.
Yes, sir, go right ahead. That's what we'd like for you to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly the situation I was, uh, discussing. So my call tomorrow with the State Corporation Commission is to try to not have those assigned at three weeks out. And what we're doing now is, and it's not, it's not like we don't have the people to go out and fix it, it's, the problem is with the system that we have. So what, that's why I've said, if you know of anyone, if you have that problem or you know of anyone who has that problem, they tell you three weeks, hang up the phone. I'm not sure you're going to like hearing this, but call.
I know.
If I can solve that problem, I'd like to.
Yeah. Uh, call, they'll call me and I, I'm, I'm, I mean, I seriously pull over the side of the road the whole way down here, saw another, another one of these out of service emails, sent it into our folks and said, "This is another one, it's a, you know, elderly customer, medical issues, and we're scrambling to get somebody out there, get out there right away." If you know your tech, you probably all know your local technicians, and you know that they are unhappy as well with what's going on, and they want to do everything that they can, and my whole Virginia team feels exactly the same way. Um, unfortunately, the dispatch people that run this dispatch system, who are going to be explaining things to the, to the State Corporation Commission tomorrow on the phone, are the people that need to get the system fixed, and I know they're working very, very hard to do it, but it's just, we need it, we need it faster. It's, you, you can't have anyone calling and getting a three week repair date on a voice service, especially in a place where you have no cell phone service, you know? Uh, you, we completely agree, and, and, and it's not just, unfortunately, it's not just a Virginia issue, it's, it's, I've got seven, I've got responsibility for seven states. It happened in five of my states, they're not, they've shut off the use of that dispatch system going any further than that. And we're a really big company, we're in 60 countries, but the CEO of my company knows about this problem and is pushing the people to get it, to get it fixed. Because, you know, from our perspective, we, you know, people have choices, and if you tell people it's going to be three weeks before they can fix their service, I don't know about you, but I'm going to say, "Thank you very much, hang up, and I'm going somewhere else with my business." And so, I mean, you're going to lose business left and right if you're not making your customers happy, so. Sure. You, uh, does he need to be on the mic?
Do you mind standing up and asking?
You spoke about the local technicians. I don't know two or three of the local technicians, and they don't work there anymore, they've been laid off. So, you know, they can't come and fix your phone, they won't.
Yeah, I, I, and I don't know the local techs. Um, I, I know that, uh, there have been some that were let go, I don't know the numbers, but I know that the problem we're having right now isn't a manpower issue, because I was on the phone with the guy today who owns the technicians, who've said, "If we could get the dispatch system to tell us, we've got the techs that can go out and fix the networks."
Yeah, I went through, through the dispatching gym, internet was out over three, over two weeks, phone service, landline phone, got on the cell phone, went to battery dead, never did talk to anybody. But, uh, you know, I've, I've been with them for 41 years, I've got to have it with them, I'm, I'm ready to go to Comcast.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know.
Didn't blame me?
To be, no, to be honest with you, I wouldn't blame you in the least, I wouldn't blame you in the least. Oh, and the other, the other thing I did want to mention, in response to your comment, I know you're not going to want to do it because you're not want, gonna, gonna have, want to get on the phone and do it again, but you need to call and tell them, "Hey, I was out of service for this amount of time, they will issue you the credit."
They told me they would, if they did, when I got the bill, you know, it was full bill.
What you can do is, if you want, shoot the email in, I'm glad to go back and look at it and, and make sure you get credited. So, I mean, I, I do this every day, and so every, and I see, I see all of them, I see every single one that goes into the State Corporation Commission, they copy me on everyone that goes to the company, I see every single response that comes back, and on everyone where there's been an out of service, there's a credit amount that happens. So if yours didn't happen, it wasn't, it, somebody messed up is what happened.
They told me it would happen, but it didn't happen.
Yeah. Shoot, shoot an email in, I'll, I'll glad to work on that for you.
I have, uh, I think it's Kitty, is it Daniel?
I just have a question and a suggestion for you. I represent quite a few of my friends, and they've all had issues. First of all, you, I want a telephone number that works, that I can call that person, and that person will have a response, and it will be straightforward. Don't send me rambling all over the country trying to find out when somebody's coming. How I got my telephone fixed, I threatened to fix it myself. I had to call you guys and say, "All right, what kind of gloves do I wear when I'm screwing these things back together?" Then they totally tell me, "Don't do that, don't do that." Now, a technician told me that they were sitting there waiting for assignments. Who gives them their assignments? Do you give them their assignments?
No, no, no.
Or is Appalachian Power give them their?
No, no, no. So, and that's.
So they published this.
So what, what is, and, and you hit exactly what, what I was just saying, is, um, there is a, I mean, if you, if you picture this, um, if you, and if you deal with Appalachian Power or any kind of service company, there's a central place that you call, and they have the master software that figures out who, who needs to go where, who gets routed where, what's the best route to take so that you make sure your jobs are done in order, you don't have somebody going up one side of the county and then down to the other side of the county, so, um, and I, I'm going to be honest with you, I live outside of Richmond, Verizon is my, my provider. I've had two outages in the past year, and in both, both times when I called, they said to me, "What two hour slot would you like today to get your phone fixed?" And I'm like, "Yeah, that's never going to happen." Sure enough, they show up, and it's because of this dispatch system that they use. So we have moved over to this new dispatch system, but as I've said, for whatever reason that they're trying to figure out, it's not spitting out the right assignments. So exactly what you said is happening. There are techs that are sitting there waiting for the system to send them the message to say, "Go work on house here and here and here and here in the right order." And they're very frustrated because they don't like sitting around when they know that, they, they live here, they go to church with you all, they, they, you know them, they, they don't like, they don't like to be sitting around not doing their job and not fixing things, because that's what they get paid, that's what they get paid to do. So, so the, the, the problem is this system that I'm telling you about, and that's what they're working very, very hard to fix as quickly as they possibly can, so.
Tell that to my neighbor who has to hook up to the telephone system every night because he has a pacemaker. And you tell him, "Oh, we'll fix your phone in 17 days."
Well, and again, so if you get one like.
Do CPR on heart patients.
If you get one like that, call in and we'll make sure, I will personally make sure that it gets done the next day.
Just give me the number, that's all I really, that's what I'm sitting here to get.
Well. Yeah, but what I'm saying is when you call that number, you're getting, you're going into the people who are putting things into this dispatch system. My job, until we get this thing fixed, is to go around it and get things fixed despite what the company is telling us to do, so.
Okay, just give me the number, because I'll look here.
You can call 27, you can call 276. I'm giving you the number, 276-730-3001. And ask, and, um, file the option for county administration.
Okay, we'll try it. Thank you.
Jerry Filts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board and, uh, Rich. Uh, when you start talking about, uh, the system and trying to get the dispatch quicker, uh, that, that hits, uh, where I'm coming from. Because, uh, we lost service on the 8th of August, I called the next day using someone else's phone, and found out it would be the 25th of August before anyone would come out. And I said, "Well, what year is that?" And the gentleman said, "Oh, 2018." So I said, "Well, good." So, uh, next day, my wife and I were going to work, and I happened to see a CenturyLink truck at a post. So I pulled in and I said, uh, told him my story, and he said, "It's not like it used to be. Uh, what's your problem?" And I told him, he said, "That's unacceptable, I'll be up there sometime today." Yeah. So, uh, sure enough, that afternoon, he came up, came to the house, checked things. He said, "The problem is 600 and so many feet this way." And he went up there, five minutes later, he's back, said, "Try your phone, it was working." That's what I want, a phone, when I pick it up, I have a dial tone, when I call, push in the numbers, the phone rings on the other end, and when somebody picks it up, I can understand them. And that's not being done now, because a lot of people in the neighborhood, uh, and most, a lot of them in my family, you know, had to go through the same thing. And finally, my, uh, oldest son said, "Well, I'm going to go up with their heads." And he went to somebody, and the next day, somebody was at his door saying, "I'm here to fix your, uh, your phone." And, uh, also, we have a, I have a daughter that's, uh, handicapped, and she has seizures. And if she has a seizure that lasts more than five minutes, then we're supposed to give her cer- certain medications and call 911. Otherwise, she's in distress. So if that happens, I know who I'll be looking for. So, uh, but, uh, I just don't understand, I guess, trying to do better, it seemed like the system was working, maybe just trying to do more, do this, do that. But I don't understand a lot that you were saying. I'll have to talk to my kids or grandkids, they probably understand it all. But I just want a phone that, that will work for us. Our cell phone, of course, is in an area that we can't get the service. If I have to use a cell phone, I go out into driveway, I go up the hill a few, to the third tree and face east. And the phone will work. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Jerry. Nancy Miles.
I'm one of the people that have made numerous complaints about the repair service nonexistence, but we did have a contract person come to my house on Friday, and, um, he, he noticed that when he took the box off, there was two wires that were not connected. And he, he's supposed to be working on lines from where I live in Fancy Gap all the way up to Whitfield, and he's supposed to be here three months. So I do appreciate that. Um, and then when you were talking about the internet, I would love to have 1.5 and .4 upload. Um, it's inconsistent. For the last two months, I have been using a speed test and the quality. Um, it goes from excellent, 1.5, to bad within minutes of each other. So that's what my biggest issue is, is that either the system's been overloaded by too many customers in a particular area. Um, I live on Chancis Creek Road, which is a major road between Interstate and Galax. Um, not too far from Dr. Not too far from Dr. Littrell. But the whole thing is, is that consistency. I just don't like the inconsistency of the service. We're watching that program on Netflix, and the sound goes out, or the picture goes out. It's, you know, we're paying for this-
I'm surprised you haven't even watched anything at 1.5 on Netflix.
Well, it's, sometimes we don't hear every other word. But, you know, we do enjoy our Netflix and our Acorn, and we would like to be able, I mean, 10 would be, I would be ecstatic. But, you know, the inconsistency of it all. It goes from 1.5 to .3. So, that's my. And I have no cell service also where I live. And I do have a 96-year-old father who, you know, that I'd liked, he would like, I mean, I'd like him to be able to contact me. And both my husband and I do have some health issues, too. So, not having a phone and not having cell service doesn't work for both of us. Thank you.
Sharon Dalton.
Thank you so much for letting us speak today, and thank you for being here. I pay $136 a month for my long distance, my internet. And June 27th, our phone line went out, and we were told it would be back July 17th. They dropped my bill, $10 to $126. So that was all I was compensated for that. And when the technician plugged it back in, it was still popping and cracking. He said that it was an issue in the box farther out, that he had told them and made them aware, and not been fixed yet. I kept my phone for 12 days, and on July 29th, it went out again. And my projected date for service, for my service to be restored, is August 31st. So we are still without a phone and internet at my house. And I checked my online bill today, and they dropped it to $116. So they have for, taken $20 off for us to be without service. And again, like everybody else is saying, we can't call 911. My husband works for the Highway Department, and it would not be acceptable for somebody to call and say, a tree is down across our road. When can you come fix it? We'll come fix it, well, next month, you know. So, we're very frustrated. And as far as the internet, we are .5 download and .3 upload. And we were told that, that would not improve, that the more people that are added to our line, the slower it is. So I've never watched Netflix at my house. And I went to my mother-in-law's house and checked Facebook, and I was shocked that a video started playing. I'd never seen that before. I mean, it's just frustrating. And I think that being without service since the 29th of July is not fair to us as customers. 31 days, and not getting any service. We would like some, some action.
Do me a favor, make sure you call tomorrow, and he'll, and he'll get the information to me tomorrow.
I won't at the top of this list.
Yeah.
I dig, I dig. But-
And the other thing I say is, I'm not sure, on your credit, I mean, it's a real pain to do it, and I know it. Because I've called in as well. But if you call them up and say, I was without service for 30 days, they give you the credit for the 30 days. They shouldn't be giving you any personal credit or anything else. On the broadband speed, I'm going to tell you this. We are not, you talk to people that move in, people that build, we're not adding any new customers in. In fact, you're not going to like it when I say this, but if you leave your house, and the new person comes in and wants to buy your house, we're probably not going to give them broadband. Because we don't want, we don't want to overload the system any further than it already is overloaded. So, um-
We'd take 1.5. We'd be thrilled. I mean, I can't upload pictures to Facebook, I can't.
And the other thing I do is, I would say, if you're, you really should, I'd give, let's give it some time to get everything taken care of with this dispatch problem we have. But once we get through this, and you'll, you'll see that, you'll see when that clears up, you really should call in and say, I'm getting slow speeds, can you come look and just see if you can do anything? Because, I mean, I do these every single day. And I'd say, there are times when they come in, they find some connection, they find something, that is able to squeak some more broadband out of it.
We live on the same farm, and they won't connect us to their internet, which is higher speed, where they can do the Netflix and all of the streaming like that. He said that we were at the very end of the line, and they can't run us to their box.
Well, one of the problems we ran into is, because I was, I was here, and I was in Patrick County, and I was in all, you know, Grayson, in 2004 and 2006, standing in front of groups of people, and they said, if I could just get at 1.5 and get off a dial-up, I'd be a happy, I'd be the happiest person in the world. So we built a lot of those systems at 1.5 before Netflix and streaming video happened. And of course, as soon as those happen, you don't have people just getting on, checking their emails or checking websites. Now you got, like me, you got two teenagers that are in the house, each watching separate 4K Netflix streams over their computers up in their bedrooms, you know. And that's, that's what's, that's put a huge strain on the system. That's why we're having to upgrade so many of the systems. We are, all these new systems that we're building now, they are all fiber-fed to the local device. So literally, if you live, there are places that, that are on that map and that red shaded, in this county, that are able to get 8 meg at their house today using us, so.
Well, I appreciate your time. I do, I do want at the top of the list. I would love it to have it fixed before the end of the month.
Call before anybody else does, I'll make sure. Do it now, yeah. But seriously, I'm glad to help on those.
I really am.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to?
I'd like to. I didn't know I was going to talk to CenturyLink tonight. How long have we talked about CenturyLink?
Are you looking at me? I'm sorry.
I'm looking at both of you.
Yeah, no, I know, I was like, we have many conversations.
I'm going to make my first statement to these gentlemen sitting up here. This is 2018, not 1893. We had better phone service 100 years ago than what we've got today. And I appreciate so much that you've come and at least listened to some of the people. And I'm not going to go back through the same problems that they've got, because everything that's been said, I've had. I've come to know the technicians by first name. And they spent about three weeks ago, they was at my house once a week, every week. Here's what I think's the problem, sir. You've got an infrastructure in place that one of these days, you guys are going to dust off your hands and say, so long. We don't need this anymore. Because it is irreparable. Where I live, where he lives, the church at the end of the street out there, where Mr. Feltz lives, there's not a monument on that street that the technicians haven't told me has been struck by lightning numbers of times. And they are becoming irreparable. And I know you're the only game in the town. So I told him about a month ago, we got to find a way to make CenturyLink successful. Because it's the only game. I checked the HughesNet, you forget HughesNet, HughesNet is, I don't even go there. But I am so afraid that your management is just going to step up one day and say, so long, we don't need this anymore. It is, it isn't, you talk about cost picture, it's not there. The cost benefit analysis is not there. The other thing I wanted to ask you, are you aware of how you have, how CenturyLink has outsourced this repair service?
Outsourced repair?
Yeah. When you call, get on the phone, I could get somebody in Guatemala, I could get somebody in Mexico, I could get somebody in Indiana. And many of the times, you cannot understand these people. There's absolutely no way. Now, finally, and I'm going to sit down, and I do want you to leave contact information. I've got that phone number already, but I know Steve's phone number. I maybe am misled, and if I am, somebody correct me. I thought that dial-up service, especially dial-tone service, let me go back and just categorically call it dial-tone service, is in fact regulated to a response time within a very, very narrow window, and much more narrow than what we're being quoted. I've heard those weeks and whatever else, times to come out and fix it. I think somebody needs to be looking and getting with the Regulatory Commission here in the state of Virginia, and see if we can't get some fire built there. But I'm glad you're here, you're all we got.
So, I can respond to, respond to this, because that's kind of where, the world I live in, is the legislative and the regulatory side. We are, we are not going to put up our hands and walk away because we are required by the law to provide voice service. We are what's called the carrier of last resort. In, in some places where there is cellphone service under the law, so let's say there's a new community that's built in, you know, Alvaro County, and self-service is available there. Under the new, under the laws that exist today, we can say, we don't have any desire to serve that, we don't, we can't be required to serve that because there's an alternate provider there of cellphones. So that's, but, but in places where there is no cellphone coverage, Verizon and its part of the territory, and us in our part of our territory, have a requirement to provide the service. And we can't, we couldn't walk away. I mean, I suppose, I suppose you said, well, we could just say, we're not going to serve these anymore, we're not going to do anything about it. But what the commission could probably do is take away our certificate to do any business in the state, anywhere, if we did that. I mean, it's just not something, you know, it's not, that's not something that we can do. There's no way to do it.
But you, but you just said earlier, if someone moves out of a house that has service, you're telling somebody else to do it?
No, 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 I'm talking about, that's broadband, broadband service. So, there's voice, and there's broadband. Voice is your access to 911. It's, we're the carrier of last resort for voice services. Broadband is completely deregulated at the state level. Because there's lots of broadband providers, at least in general, there are lots of broadband providers. If you notice, for instance, if you get on our website, we don't charge you all more for your broadband because there's nobody else that provides it where you are. Everybody pays the same rate, in fact, across the whole country, everybody pays the same rate for their, for broadband, whether you're in an urban area or, or a rural, rural area. On the regulations of the voice service, the, there actually isn't, there used to be a whole list of response times that used to exist, those don't exist anymore. We now have to respond within a reasonable period of time, under the circumstances, that's what the test is. Is three weeks the proper time? No, it's not. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I'm telling you, it isn't the right time. Our goal usually is to get voice repairs done within 24 hours. And if you call, and you call me, I'm going to tell you, probably 95% of the time, we're going to get those fixed within 24 hours, like we should be doing. And, you know, it's a big black eye on the company that we're not doing that. So, I think that was what I wanted to address.
Yes, sir.
Just, I'd just say one thing on the broadband side, you know, while you're living in the regulatory government side. Everywhere on that map that's red, it's very difficult to get grant money from the state because the cap money has already been there. So if you could lobby to get that loosened up a little bit, we could look for other solutions.
We got rid of that. That's no longer in the law. Uh, this last session.
Really?
Yeah. So this last session- This last session, that was one of my major accomplishments, was to get that out so we can now use federal matching money, whatever we, we can, so that we can, we can do that. But, and the problem, the problem becomes, and this is, you know, I did projects with Washington County, Lunenburg County, and one other county, I forgot which, Alvaro County. Alvaro actually has some very, very rural parts in the southern part. And the problem we ran into was making our, there's, there's a limited amount of money. So this time, it's $4 million, this, 2019, and $4 million in 2020. $4 million is not a lot of money. I could do $4 million in Carroll, in Carroll County, and hit some homes, but it wouldn't be a whole lot. Because trenching, trenching fiber, very, very expensive proposition. $100,000 bucks a mile, you know, give you round numbers. And it's very, very expensive, expensive to do that. So the problem we have is making our rural projects attractive enough to be able to beat some of the other projects that are out there. And that's, that's the real hassle that I have. And, and I worked with counties for literally two months to put these packages together and submit them, only to have them, have somebody else get, get the money. And a lot of them are, you know, they're the bigger, sexier projects. Some of them are wireless projects. And, and again, going back to what I said before, there may be some of these areas where you need to be looking at wireless. Maybe wireless is the right solution to you all, and it, and it isn't us. And I'd be the first one to admit that in some places, so. Sir.
Mine's been out two times in the last year. I called it in, and when I looked on the calendar, it's about three weeks out the date she'd give me. And she wasn't in Galax or Carroll County, I couldn't hardly understand her. Other than the one thing, if it's inside, it's going to cost me $65. I said, honey, if it's outside, how much do you pay me? It don't work that way.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I will say, when you call in, those calls are going all over the place. But the reason they are is because they are, they go by your phone number, they go into this dispatch system, which eventually will, will work the way it's supposed to, and get the right technicians to you. So all the folks that you're seeing are your local, your local folks that do the work. We have hired, I think we hired, just recently, we've hired 30 additional contract folks to come in and, and help as we've got, get rid of the backlog of orders that we have right now, or repairs that, that we have. But those will be there just temporarily for a few months, until we get back to load back to where it should be, so.
Go ahead.
Robbie, I didn't get a chance to sign on any one of them, but I'll come up. I understand what everybody else is saying. Kudos to the gentleman right there that says, this is 2018. In the 80s, I was in the military. And I had, I had the privilege to hold one of the very first backphones that were in place because I was an admiral driver for Argentina, Admiral. They got to bring it over here. Argentina's a third world country for some, most of the part, and they had better system than we have. CenturyLink is the only one around here. You guys kind of like monopolize this area to where you're the only ones. I don't have the privilege to go to Comcast. I went to Comcast, they said, give me $10,000, I'll bring it out to you. Wrong answer. There's enough people where I live, if we each paid $100, they'd probably get it out there to us. But you guys run this area as much as you do. We got a lady, I was sitting here next and walked in with, she's in town. And she still has crappy service, and was given a three week out, and still has to pay for the same bill that she was promised to get discounts from. I, myself, the same thing. Seems like June was a big date for everybody around here. We're not, we're not all getting it. Cell, wireless, I would love to go wireless. I carry a cellphone that I have to have service that was crappy around here because it's US cell monopolize everything around here. Now Verizon's come in, they're doing better. But this is a mountainous area. And the cell, cell service bounces off on the tops, not down in the valleys where most people live. I've learned how to work on fiber optics after I got out of the military. So I know what it's like to put in and install, work on them. If I was her, I'd have done my own work, too. When I built my home, I did all my own wiring, so I know how to do it. The problem is, when are we going to fix this? What is the problem that's not causing to be fixed? My technician told me, call North Carolina in this area, and ask for this certain person, and then I'll be able to get the job faster. Why do I got to call North Carolina when I got a local office here? Now, these are the situations that are going on. Why are all these things? And what is it that, why are you here, and you're saying certain things that, well, we really can't do much of that anyway? What's, what's going to be the resolution for the whole problem? Those are a lot of questions in, mixed in that, and it's a lot of variable, valid answers. Questions, should I say. And we all would like to have an answer. What are we going to do, and when is it going to happen?
Yep, and that's the, the call I'm on tomorrow with the State Corporation Commission, is our, the head of our, the dispatch, the people that are in charge of the dispatch, and they're going to try to explain what the problem is, and how long it's going to take to fix. Because we know that it's a problem, we, we know it's a huge problem. It's affecting, it's, it's not just affecting you all. I was in Rep. Hennick a month ago, having the same, same conversation with them. So, you know, I don't, I don't do software, computer software, so I don't understand what the problem is with the system. It actually was implemented a year ago. We had some initial problems, things went really, really well. They tried to add some new features into it, and that's when, you know, all hell broke loose. So, you know, I wish, I wish I could tell you what the problem is, and that I know what the fix is. I'm hoping to know what the answer is, what the answer is tomorrow. I'm hoping to know what the answer is tomorrow. And one of the things that the commission is going to ask, what's the timeline for getting these things fixed?
Would you publish a bulletin as a result of your meeting tomorrow so that we can have some feedback?
I'll pass, if I get the date or some information I can pass along, I'm glad to pass it along and see what we can do to get the word out to folks, so.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the lady who lives in town. And I guess I live about a mile from the, I don't know your telephone terminology, but the telephone building is right down the hill here. So I'm within a mile. So, and I have lived in my home since '71. So I've been, and I've had the same telephone number the last 46 years. And my problem is, and this has been going on for, before there was ever any internet, I would get static on the line. It sounded like somebody was frying bacon over the line. And sometimes, and now I'm having a problem. If we have a lot of hard rain, I get this popping and cracking, and then my internet goes down. So over the years, I say for the last 20 years, I've had technicians to come, and the problem is really not at my house. It's down the street. There's a box down there, and they'll, that's where the problem is. So I've been getting Band-Aid service for the last, well, 25 years or longer. And I agree with the gentleman back there that said our infrastructure is really out of date. And I like to just, I just like to have good telephone service where I can pick up the phone and I don't have all this static. And then when I do call them, then they come and, you know, check things out. And another thing, when we built our home, we had our power line and our telephone cable So there shouldn't be any deterioration there. But like I said, it's not, the problem's, it's not at my house, it's down the street. And I, my phone bill, I've been paying around $120 some dollars a month, and that's for internet, and I've got the package deal. And then it jumped up to $130 some dollars a month. And I called them one day and I said, "I want to see how we can get this telephone bill reduced because I'm paying for service that I'm not really getting." And like I said, when it comes a hard rain, and then I've got the static over this phone, and then my internet goes down. And I have read things on Facebook where customers have been complaining, and they have threatened that they're going to go somewhere else. And CenturyLink has the attitude, "Well, we don't care." Do, you know, they just, "Well, more power to you." Now, and there's been several comments like that. And I'm just about ready to, thinking about switching over myself. But I'd like to stay with CenturyLink. I'm getting old and I'm setting my ways, but something's going to have to change. But, you know, people talking about living out in the rural areas and they can't get the service. Well, and I'm here in town, and I'm not really getting good service, so something needs to be fixed.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, I don't know who, I'd love to know, when I hear those stories, I'd love to hear the name of the person who didn't seem like they didn't care. Because you see me here, you know your techs out in the field, and my guess is, all of those techs care.
Sir, you need to just go dial the number.
See, but here's the thing.
That's all you need to do. You'll get your question answered firsthand.
But you see, all those people are doing is, they are taking down your address and your phone number. They're listening to what your complaint is, trying to figure out if a dispatch needs to be done or not. And then they're dispatching a local person out there. It's what they're doing. Now, I do know, language is an issue, and the further you go out in southwest Virginia, the harder it gets to have somebody from there talking to, you know, people here, here are the people out in Washington County trying to talk to the people that are there. So, I mean, we know that's an issue. Unfortunately, the way the business is, that's where the call centers are going to be located, you know?
All the call centers I go to are in the Philippines.
Yeah.
And I say, "Give me somebody in America." They won't do it.
Yeah, no, they, you know, that's where the call centers are.
And then they put you through a protocol that you've been through 45 times, and you got to sit there, and you spend hours on the phone trying to get help. The whole thing is, you have had broadband exhaustion for at least four or five years. I had one of your techs tell me that. And you kept selling it, you kept selling your service, and you're robbing the people here.
Well, give me your address and I can actually go look at that and tell you. Because what we have been doing is, we know, we watch what our usage is, and when we reach the level where we're not willing to do anymore, we don't sell anymore. For as many times I hear from people like you, usually hear the people I get the call from that says, "My neighbors got it," or, "I just moved into a house, the CenturyLink modem is sitting there, but you all won't let me connect." I say, "Well, the reason why is because we got too much usage on the network, we're not going to sell it to you." So realtors don't like that because if you're selling your house, you'd like to be able to say it's got broadband, but a lot of these areas, we're just not, we will not hook anybody else up there again until there's a fix, you know?
Here's another thing that I find ironic. When I, my phone is down, and, well, my internet's down, well, I might have phone service, but I don't have the internet. And I call repair service, and I go through all this menu, and then they'll say, "You can get online and, you know, explain." Well, how can I get online when I have no internet?
Yeah.
I mean, I find it very ironic.
Yeah.
And it says, "Chat with us now," but there's no chat available. Right.
Yeah, I don't have chat.
So you think, "Oh, I'm not going to have to go through the Philippines." But no, that doesn't work either.
I really think you ought to audit your own systems, or...
Oh, I call with customers all the time in our system, and I also, like you all, I call Dominion Power, I call Verizon, I call the other places. So I, you know, I call my doctor's office and I have to do the same thing, so.
But another thing is, used to, when I called repair service and they'd have technician out next day, they'd tell me the hours between such and such time. And now it's days before anybody can come. But yet, we're paying a bill, and we're paying for service that we're really not getting. And I don't think it's fair.
Well, like I said, I mean, if you are without, if you are out of service, you get a credit for the period you're out of service. You've got to go through the hassle of calling somebody to get it, but they will give you... Unfortunately, there's no way of knowing that you're down and automatically giving you a credit. But if you call, like I said, I see these every single day. I could read, I had my phone with me, I could read 20 of them that happened today where we gave the credit. And as I've said, for now, until the dispatch system is fixed, you know, if somebody said, "Why do we got to call somebody in North Carolina?" Well, I hate to say, but that's like calling me. What I'm able to do is get around the system because the system isn't working and get things to work in the way they should be working. I mean, it's terrible, I've got to do that on an individual basis, and it's just me, but I'm willing to do that, you know?
Another thing, I, technician, I think this was about a year ago, came to my house, and we were talking about the service and, you know, the time span it would take them to come and do the repair. And I said, "You do know that you're losing a lot of customers." And I said, "Because people are getting very aggravated and they're getting mad, they're getting angry." And I said, "Why isn't something..." And here's what he told me. "CenturyLink does not want to spend the money to upgrade." Now, that's what I was told.
Well, here's what I can tell you. What we do is, when you call in, they look at, there's a system out there that looks at the number of people that call in. So that's why I always say, when you're out, call in. Tell your neighbors to call in. Because there actually is a system that looks to see where the most calls come in, and those get the priority when there's money that comes in to do rehab on sections. And, you know, again, I do these every single day as well. And so we're putting millions of dollars, literally millions of dollars in Virginia into putting new systems in, putting new span lines in, you know, whatever, whatever. And the way we do that is when we prioritize the areas that have the most trouble reports. So, you know, you got to call in, you call in to make the trouble report. Now, I can tell you, in the ideal world, we'd love to go and take all of these lines that are here and replace everything. If we do that, it's going to cost billions of dollars. Where is the billions of dollars going to come from? You know? You don't want to pay for a system to have to replace everything, so that's why we do it on a rolling basis, based on the number of reports that come in of outages, so.
Thank you.
I would like to make one more point. If you will look at your phone bill, there is a universal service tax that every one of us pay on our CenturyLink bill. And I investigated that. And that is money to be used to provide services to people.
It's that. It's CAF money. Now, it used to be money that went to maintain the voice network. It no longer is. We pay for the repairs and everything on the voice network out of what you pay on your phone bill, not out of universal service money. Universal service now is universal broadband service. So that's where those billions of dollars are going, is where you see those shaded areas now. That's part of the problem that the company has, to be real frank with you, is the money that used to go, the billions of dollars that used to go to support the voice network is gone. What do you do? Do you go to customers now and say, you know, "We haven't raised your, literally haven't raised your telephone bill, the voice portion of it." If you look at the voice portion of it, I think we haven't raised our rates since, I thought, a couple of years ago was, 1984 was the last price increase that we did. So if you're a standalone voice customer, if there are any here that's just standalone voice customers, I would love to hear what you pay for your voice line and what you paid for it 20 years ago, to hear what the difference is. So we haven't raised the rates. You know, part of what I've always wondered is, the solution to me is, you know, and this is not me, CenturyLink speaking, this is just me as a person speaking, is say, "Well, if it costs more to provide the service and we're not getting the federal support that we used to get, you should raise the bills." You know, is maybe what ought to happen, you know, and see if people want to continue to pay for the service or not. And I think part of the answer is going to be, it's going to, part of it, I think, is going to take the expansion of cellular. Because I think, you know, my son is at VCU, he's got a phone in his dorm room, and I asked him one day, "What's the phone number?" He goes, "I have no idea." I said, "Well, does it have dial tone?" He says, "Well, nobody's ever picked it up. We all use our, we all have our cellphones. Why would we ever use the landline phone?" You know, and I have a landline phone, but it's only because it's part of a bundle and it's, it'd be a pain for me to call Verizon and have them take it off. And also, I use it to screen all the junk calls. But, you know, I don't really, if my voice line goes down at home, I don't really care. In fact, it's kind of nice. It doesn't ring because I do everything over my cellphone. Eventually, you know, that's probably where we wind up, is cell coverage really does get complete coverage everywhere. And then, you know, you're going to be a broadband customer, but you're probably not going to be a voice customer anymore. And that's what Verizon is seeing in all of their urban areas.
But there are people like myself who live near the Blue Ridge Parkway who are not going to use it because it interferes with the natural beauty of the Blue Ridge Parkway.
Yeah. Well, there's actually a program, I hate to keep talking, am I...
You go ahead.
There's actually a program that's out right now, it's called FirstNet, and it's a first responder system that they're building nationwide. I think AT&amp;T got the contract for it. You all know about it back there, FirstNet? I mean, the idea is to have coverage everywhere. So you're out in the middle of Yellowstone Park, in the middle of nowhere, and there's coverage out there because they want to have first responder coverage everywhere in the country. You know, so, again, this is me speaking, this is not CenturyLink, so recording this, this is official. But, you know, my thought is, once there's coverage, if AT&amp;T has coverage everywhere across the country, literally every single place around the country, then they're going to have, it's going to be in the parks, it's going to be everywhere. And if you live next to the park, you're going to have, because if they build all that, why would they not leverage off of that and get you as a customer paying money to them in addition to the money that they get from the feds to run the program? You know? But I don't know, you officers, have any idea how far down the road the FirstNet's supposed to be?
Still down here. But they are doing their best.
Yeah, yeah. And that, I mean, that may be, that may go a long ways, but, you know, five years? How far down the road does that possibly take? So in the meantime, we have the obligation to continue to provide that access to you, that carrier of last resort, so at least you'd call 911.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry, I have some other questions.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, no more, you said I was done.
I have a question. Can you tell me how much a technician makes?
Lou, I have no idea.
Just give me a ballpark.
I literally have no idea what they make.
$20, $40 an hour?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, just for the people that's in this room, each person so far I've heard tonight said, "Their team's averaging about $120, $130 per person paying into the phone company." Just in this room, in one month, your company has made $4,680 for the people that are in here, seventy-two people have just walked out. And a few times that, twelve months a year, that's $56,000. Okay? Only if that makes sense to me, I don't know how much it is for a technician, okay? But if we have this system that you say that is working, and we're able to pay for these technicians, and it's not a problem having the technicians on hand, okay, that's what you've said. And obviously, you're making money because we're all paying, and we're not even getting our money back for when we don't have the money returned to us for the weeks that we're not using the service. Because some of us are senior citizens, and some of us are young enough that we don't even know how to access that information. And quite frankly, some of us work 40 hours a week, and we just don't have time to battle with raising families and children and everything else that's going on in our life. So really, you're pocketing more money than you're returning to the people that are suffering. Okay? So my argument is, just in the history of Ramone, that $56,000 that this company is making, you're sitting here and telling us, "This is what we've got." And I can see every reason why people are upset because this is not working. This is not financially working. This whole system is not working.
I know ten technicians that worked for CenturyLink. They're probably labor deserters. They were laid off. They leave in Galaxia, they were laid off.
If we're going outside of our own country to get even cheaper, you know, because we're, Philippines is cheaper than what we're paying our American people here, and we still don't have enough money, the story is not matching with what this community is suffering.
You mean enough money to build out everybody with 253 broadband or...
And you say that for what you said, your figure was, for one mile, was $100,000. Okay? So I don't know how many people live in this area because I don't have the statistics of everything, but you start timing that up for per month, per year, and you start figuring this out just, just here, okay, Carroll County. We're not talking about the 60,000 other parts of the world that you were talking about. I don't know what you're making for that, but we're just talking about our little community right here. You're saying that you're so global that you're around the world. So what I'm asking is, if you're making all this millions of dollars, and you are, you can't sit here and say that you're not because you are, okay? Because I just took the figure in this one room, and I can clearly see that you're making enough money just in this area. Time it out. You'll understand what I'm saying.
So I actually do that, I do that almost every day when I get calls about, from folks about doing communities in broadband. And I can tell you that the payback to do those is between 15 and 20 years to do almost all of these, almost any area that isn't shaded in... to do almost all of these, almost any area that isn't shaded and red there, that's the payback. That's just making our money back. That's not making a profit, just making our money back. Because I gave you the figure for the fiber, I didn't give you the price for the labor to install it, the equipment that has to go in. And we, our take rate is about forty percent in Virginia. About forty percent of the people that we build to actually will subscribe to service. So I run those numbers literally every single day.
I come from a family that has businesses. I have been in business myself. You cannot tell me that your company is not making money, and you're resourcing it out in another country. So you can't sit here and tell us as people that you're not making a profit and it's costing more than you've got coming in.
Oh, no, that, no, that's not what, obviously, we're a public company, you could go and pull up our 10K on the internet right now, and you can see how much money the company is making and returning back to its shareholders. Yeah, you could look at that. I am not here to, I'm here to tell you that when it comes to building these broadband networks, that they are not, there is no, even at fifty percent money that comes from the state, they don't make financial sense to build. And if it were your company and you were a shareholder, you would say, "You're not wasting your money on something that's gonna take you twenty years to get your money back."
But the problem is, and this is not you personally, this is a frustrated customer, okay? So it's not to you personally, but it is to the organization that you're representing, okay? I don't think everybody here is saying that the internet is the big issue. Some are, some are not. Some are saying they have health issues and they need to have a landline that's operable. That is a very minimal amount of money compared to the internet problem. You have two separate problems. And the first problem needs to be 911. We need to be able to get the medics there or whatever. I have disabilities in my family, and I see people here that have come to represent themselves for the same reason. These people need to have service. Internet is fine, okay, but it's second. One has to be medical need or whatever, the landline for a purpose. We need to call an officer, we need to call EMS, we need help, we need to have that phone working. For me to pay a hundred and thirty dollars a month for a phone that is, I mean, I'd be happy to pay twenty-five, I'd be happy to pay fifty bucks a month for me to have a phone that is working, okay? You can charge me the other for the cellphone, because that's the separate part of your bill. So I can see people being upset just paying a hundred and thirty dollars for something that's not even working. The basics, we're talking grade school basics of just picking up the phone and having it work. We're not talking about internet, we're not talking about Netflix, we're not talking, we're talking about this stupid phone being able to work.
I think that's, that is one of the things that is a sore spot with a lot of people, is not having a phone that works adequately. I mean, we have so many areas in this county that has no cell service. And I was a CenturyLink customer, I'm not, no longer, I'm a Comcast customer, I had that luxury. But unfortunately, when it comes to a landline, you're it. And that's why I think a lot of people are so upset about it. I mean, and I know that everybody talks about the broadband, the internet, and I think there's more people upset over the service we get out of our telephone system than there is out, than they are over the broadband and the internet.
Oh, yeah. And those, I mean, the complaints that I deal with every day, I say I get a lot, ninety-five percent of them are out of service on voice. And I, and we tell everybody that's an internet service problem, "We'll get to you when we can." We're getting the voice customers back up. And what I look for when I read these is, you know, elderly people, no cellphone service and medical. If I see all three of them, well, I mean, any of them that are out of service without a cellphone, generally, they're not calling me if they have a cellphone, right? If they have a cellphone, they're calling in, but they're not calling us to complain about it, they're not calling the commission. They're only calling when that's their lifeline. So, and as I said, those are the ones that we are moving, I physically am moving to the front of the line when I hear about them until we can get the system fixed.
Regarding the problem with the dispatch problem, is there anything that we, as a community, can do to be proactive to hasten the good change that needs to happen? I mean, lobbying or legislature, is there anything?
At this point, I mean, normally, I'd say, "Yeah, you can do this and this and this." But I was on three calls with the commission today, I'm on a call at nine o'clock tomorrow with three VPs on it. You know, it's, it's got, and I get, you know, Senator Carico, I think, called me yesterday, I got Morgan Griffin, his office called me today, twice, Senator Kane's office, so, I mean, and you can, you better believe that I'm telling my people, I'm not doing my day job anymore of regulatory and legislative work, I'm handling customer complaints. I'm a very well-paid customer service rep right now, but my job, the way I look at it, is to get people back up and running, get the service going. Especially, I've got members of Congress calling me and telling me, "There's a problem." And that's, are the reason I'm here tonight.
What was wrong with the way it used to be?
Well, boy, you sound just like me. No, I mean, that's why I gave you the example of the Verizon situation, because, you know, I work for a phone company. When I call them, I'm not expecting to have somebody show up at my house the same day in a two-hour time slot. But that's what they're actually doing with their dispatch system right now. And that's what ours is supposed to be able to do. It's supposed to be able to manage the workload and the, to the workload to the workforce and give you, so when you call, they can say, "Okay," like with Verizon, when I call them, they say, "Hey, are you gonna be there this afternoon?" "Yeah." "Would you like twelve to two or two to four?" "I'll take twelve to two." And sure enough, somebody shows up. And when they show up, they knew what my problem was, and they were able to fix it immediately. And that's what we, that's what our system is supposed to be able to do when it's running the way that it's supposed to be able to run.
So how long do you think?
I don't, I don't know. That's why I'm on the call tomorrow. I mean, I would have, I would have thought, two months ago, I would have thought thirty days to give something to fix like that, you know, sixty days? You know, here I am at ninety days, still dealing with the same problem, it's just, to me, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, it is.
All right. I think we're gonna move on. Thank you all for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your information. And if you all have questions or concerns, call the administrator's office, and they'll pass them along. The next item on the agenda is an update from Mr. Durbin about our non-user fees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So, over the past few months, the board has gotten a number of inquiries from citizens who are not happy with the mandatory connection non-user fee.
Excuse me, can you talk into my, I can't hear you back here.
So, in response to concerns raised by citizens regarding the PSA's non-user mandatory connection fee, the board has asked us to reach out to Rural Development to review the financing documents from these PSA projects and give some direction on what can be done, where we are now and what can be done moving forward on the mandatory connection. And I will say that, at the time that the PSA did the financing with Rural Development, there were really a number of options that could have been pursued to finance these projects. One would have been to ask the county to issue general obligation bonds, which would count as debt against the county, it would require a referendum by the voters, and it would, because it counts as debt, it would limit the county's ability to borrow in the future. That would be taken into account for future borrowings. That was determined for a number of reasons over the years to not be feasible, and that was not the way that the, that the county or the PSA decided to go. Another option would have been to establish enough user agreements, or, I'm sorry, capacity agreements with county, with the IDA agreeing to purchase enough capacity to satisfy the debt obligations so that the bonds would be paid off that way. That would come out of general county revenues and would, would be supported by property taxes. That was also not the path that was chosen. The PSA and the county settled on a financing scheme with Rural Development where the minimum number of users was required to be on the system, supplemented by some capacity agreements that were, that were executed by the county. For that type of financing, in order for the federal government to be satisfied that we're going to be able to repay the financing, it was necessary to have a minimum number of users, and a component of that, in reviewing, reviewing our figures, was a mandatory connection slash non-user policy. That was included in the letter of conditions. If you're gonna finance, you don't have to choose this method of financing, but if you do choose this method of financing, mandatory connection was required in order to get the money. That was in our letter of conditions, that was incorporated into the bond resolution, that is also part of the grant agreements. And most of these projects did have a significant grant component as well. For example, Cliffview alone had eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in grant funds from the federal government, nine-hundred thousand for Coon Ridge, five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand for Exit One, and there are a number of other grants that the PSA acquired over the years. In order to get the grants, the grant agreement contained a provision where Rural Development review, would review our rate structure and approve it. So again, that was, that was part of the deal when, when these financings were obtained. In discussing it with Rural Development and reviewing the bond documents, we do have the ability to modify our rate schedule going forward. And I would recommend that the, that the PSA prepare, you know, some proposals for maybe transitioning from such dependence on the, the non-user mandatory connection fee, because we've heard so much feedback from the public on this issue. But, you know, a concern is that if you, if you shift away from mandatory connection, that money's gonna have to come from somewhere else. It's, there's just, there's no way around it. We've got a certain level of financial effort that we need to put in to service the bonds, to maintain our reserve account, and to operate the system. So that is something that I think that the PSA and the county can do in cooperation with Rural Development. Any proposed change to our rate structure, I would recommend that we consult with Rural Development and get their approval in writing before we finalize any change, but I think that's the direction where we can move. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address it. Steve, did you have anything to add on to that?
No, just, well, the only thing I would add on to it is, given the tremendous amount of flexibility that you just described there, and the, the number of different ways, not the rates, the rate structures are the same for everybody in the county, but just about everything else about how their water projects were done and financed is different. And there may be unintended or consequences that are perceived as not a happy outcome, which will solve this one problem and maybe create another one. I think you need to take a really good, hard look at this data and come up with the fairest, the fairest solution possible.
It's not necessarily an easy fix, when one reason I think Steve's alluding to is that, you know, going back ten or fifteen years, the terms of the financing that we've obtained from Rural Development over the years has not always been identical. And so, in some cases, we were able to offer folks, if they, if they signed up, at the, at the time the project was being installed, they might get a, they might have the option to have the meter, get a connection installed for free or for a discounted rate. Other parts of the system, that wasn't necessarily available. So there are different.
Some have to pursue or involve, some, there's different kinds of water sources. Some of it's from wells, some of it's from, you know, it's a real odd.
So it's not a uniform, it's not a uniform situation.
You mentioned grants, are you, you're saying grants and loans, or that's what you mean, is grants is loans?
Of course, there's loans that we have to pay back. But in addition to that funding, Rural Development also gave grants, for example, on, on the Cliffview, it was eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. So as long as we stay in compliance with the terms of the, of the grant and the loan, that money never needs to be paid back. But we always wanna make sure that we're able to service the, service the loan portion and comply with all the grant terms, so that we don't get ourselves in a position where we're having to pay back not only a loan, but a grant as well.
A grant also.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Being a new kid on the block and on here since January, does the PSA committee set the rates? Is that their job to establish rates and establish all this? Okay. I don't know if I'm out of order or not, but I would like to see this board request that the PSA work on this problem that we have as countywide, and come up with some suggestions to stay in compliance and to see what options we have in order to try to fix the situation of the non-user fees, or try to relieve the situation of the non-user fees.
Suggestion was made that the chair and vice chair of both boards get together and kind of discuss and see what kind of programs we can come up with. And I know this is a very touchy subject with lots of people in the county, and I understand fully why, I do. And, but we also have to realize that we've gotta do it in the right process, even though it's something that don't necessarily agree with the way it was done, it's still gotta be done in the right process so we don't violate and Rural Development call, I guess you could say, call the loans in, you know? And I know that's what Steve was trying to imply to, where we don't have to pay back the grant and the loan both. We've gotta make sure we get approval from them to do it the right way.
And I should say that in my conversations with Mr. Hilt at Rural Development, he was very helpful and willing to work with us and give feedback, but it is something that we wanna make sure that they are on board with as.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, by all means.
By all means, yes. We don't need to put any more financial burden than we can on the county. And I think that's, that's what I think we need to work towards too, Joe, is to do that and try to establish it this way.
I should also just mention that before rates would be changed, it would require the PSA to advertise and hold a public hearing. So that's some, that would be part of the process going forward.
Anyone else have anything?
And in certain cases, depending on what the situation is, we'd also have to have a hearing about possibly changing or amending the legislation as well.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing in October concerning this issue, either the mandatory non-user fees. And hopefully, if set off in October, then that'd give us a couple of months for PSA and the PSA members and the board can look at what can be done.
I have a motion on the floor for us to plan a public hearing at our October meeting. Do I have a second?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second for us to advertise. I have a motion and a second for us to advertise and prepare for a public hearing in October or any other discussion. We'll start voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all for that. The next item on the agenda is the committee appointments. Do we have any that needs to be made and kind of get to pull up? It's taking a minute. Still have those opening in social services?
From Lawfort?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I have a, uh, person who is willing to take that position.
Okay.
Her name is Lynette Thomas. She is a, she does reside in the Lawfort district and she has agreed to take that position, being approved by the board.
Do I have a motion that we accept that nomination for social services board?
I so move.
Have a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? Start voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Uh, yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Meeting is next Tuesday, if you can let her know that. There's a social services meeting next Tuesday.
She is, she is well aware of the duties that she'll be responsible for and when they meet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the planning commission has two vacancies, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, David Williams, I understand, is wanting to step down. We have one vacant position other than that.
Did, did we not change that? I think we only got one vacancy. It's David Williams, is that right, Ron?
There is one vacancy and David's running.
Okay. Okay, so there is actually two positions.
There will be.
Okay, when, okay.
There's one open right there.
Does anyone have any feedback on that?
Can we advertise that?
Yeah. And CPNT Trent and Trent Stanton is, is his term up or?
He actually moved out of the area.
Okay. And we have Laura Taylor that's.
She's the VP of the Bureau.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we place Laura Taylor on the CPNT? Is, is, she took his, his job, that's probably with Mel.
That's the Director of Family Preservation.
Okay.
You mentioned it last month, didn't you?
Yeah. Okay. Do I have a motion that we accept Laura?
Make a motion, accept her.
Have a second?
So move.
Any other discussion? Start voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And, um, but yes. And also while we're on CPNT, when I first agreed to take the CPNT, I was working a different work schedule and had time to attend and I no longer do and Rex has agreed to take my spot on the CPNT so we'll have, be able to attend. Do I, how do we need to handle that or?
He's going to resign.
Okay, well, I will resign my post on the CPNT as effective immediately and I would take a motion to, from someone to accept Rex as my replacement on the CPNT. Is there anybody else that would like to take it? Rex said if anybody else is interested, he'd let you have it.
I'll make a motion to accept Rex.
Do I have a second?
So move.
Any other discussion? Start voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Abstained.
Mr. McCraw.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
It's a landslide.
It's a landslide. They was jumping in there to take that position. Have a report on our year-end financial report, please. Ms. Nikki?
It's going to take me just a minute to get this set up.
It's up here.
It's up here.
Oh, okay. How do you see it?
It's not that big.
I honestly didn't see it. Okay, thank you. I'm here tonight to present a financial overview of how we finished fiscal year 2018. This should be actually relatively good news, which is an unusual standpoint for my presentations sometimes. Sometimes they're a little grim, but we actually finished the fiscal year 2018 very well. Right here I have a slide for the original budget, our amended budget, and basically our total year-to-date revenue and expenditures. Okay, you will notice all three of these columns are different. A budget is a financial planning tool that you begin trying to estimate what all your expenses are going to be. You have things within the year that come up that, um, cause you to amend your budget. And just because you amend your budget does not mean that's exactly where you're going to land. So if you look at the one key number on this, um, entire slide is the difference between our total revenue and total expenditures in the general fund. And this is only county general fund. Okay, we budgeted $41,451,784 for both revenue and expenditures at the beginning of the year. We amended our budget about $1.4 million through the year for a total of $42,957,489 for revenue and expenditures. By state code, you're required to have a balanced budget, so your revenues are always going to match your expenditures on the budget side. But when you finish your year, hopefully your expenditures don't match all the revenue that you've taken in for the year. So for fiscal year 2018, our total revenue that we collected during the year was $42,872,431. Total expenses were $42,93,364,000, which left us a difference of $779,067. Okay, and keep in mind, well, hold on, I had a little effect in there that doesn't seem to be flying in.
Just hit return on the keyboard for?
Hit, hit return on the keyboard. Nope. Nope, isn't it, I'm not playing. Long story short, there was a little bullet that would pop in that basically would explain that we have not had a positive revenue over expenditures since 2012. So that is quite a milestone in, in six years when you consider your inflation with your expenditures going up and your, um, so every month I provide to the board a cash flow analysis. And what that is, is basically your revenue minus your expenditures to give you where you stood at the end of every month in terms of cash flow. And we have a trend that continues almost every year, but depending on where you are in, on which line, and you'll notice that for 2018, our line is green, so it's this line right here, and it's trending higher, meaning your revenues are over your expenditures more than they typically are throughout the entire year, where we ended with a positive return of 779,067. You will see the year prior to that, if I can get the colors right, is this purple line where it trended, we were minus 410,958 last, or 2017, the end of the year. So we've been trending slowly but surely. 2012 is not on this chart, but, you know, we've gone in the right direction every year. Hope is to continue, ending here at the end of the year. The difference in your budgeted expenditures. Why is it not showing up? Okay.
It pumped up to a second. There it is.
Okay. There is another slide here, but.
Is it the long, is it the right file? Was it, was it the other?
No, 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 it was the only file. Um, okay. Basically, there was, I'll explain to you what the other slide was. There was a difference between our expenditures budget, original budget versus amended budget of $1.5 million. Those differences, 1.2 or 1.3, I believe, was attributable to, um, public welfare, which is CSA, social services, and 300,000 of it was attributable to jail, per diems, at the jail. I'm going to see if I can actually.
What's wrong?
I'm sorry. Well, I can't do it because my flashlight is over there, I'm sorry. While we had a difference between our original budget and our amended budget of $1.5 million, we actually ended the year only $641,000 over our original budget that we budgeted. And why is that, one would ask? If we have increased expenditures for public welfare and for jails of that significant amount, why did we only end up with $641,000? We basically eliminated three positions during the year. We postponed some of our capital projects and our economic development expenditures were not fully expended. We, we expended a portion of them, but not all. And basically, the department's just going without, trying to figure out ways to provide some of the same services, but using resources that we have in-house. I, I'm sure you, some of you will remember your budget books this year. Typically, we would buy new binders for everyone so they could take them home and, and keep them on file. And what we did this year was we used existing things that we have. And I think you see a lot of that going on in the building. Revenues, which I'm just going to point out that the collection and reporting falls under the purview of the county treasurer, so I'm not going to speak to any of those things, other than we collected 1.4 more than the original budget in revenue. 166,000 of that was attributable to general property taxes. We collected $350,000 more in fines and forfeitures with the sheriff's department. Our Carroll County Fire collections were up 230,000. CSA collections, while we had increased expenditures associated with public service, we also, um, both CSA collections and federal public assistance for social services, those two numbers were up on the revenue side, 530 on CSA and 118,000 on public service, which is basically, um, anyone eligible for 4E-type expenditures. Okay, and basically some observations that we internally had about fiscal year 2018. We obviously would like to see and are working towards seeing a cash flow positive at the end of the year, along with the board supervisors. We're going to continue doing that and critically reviewing all of our expenditures that we have, trying to find ways to continue to cut if we can, um, continue to analyze unfilled positions, whether it's to keep them vacancy for a period of time, just to, as a, as a point of saving money. I believe that the continued efforts of the treasurer's office is going to continue to help our, our cash flow and, um, according to the treasurer, the DMV stops for collection of delinquent personal property taxes is currently being pursued, which that will be a, um, significant tool in the toolbox, I believe. And, uh, the budget variances stem from situations entirely out of the control of county admin. And while those issues that are out of our control seem to come up in, in large proportion, we're trying to make changes internally to make sure that we still financially are solvent and, and doing a good job for our citizens. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I can send you all the copy of the presentation as well, especially since I'm missing the one slide with the difference between the original budget and the adopted budget.
I have it here now, but do you want to look at that slide?
It was basically, um, what I said, it was a difference of 1.5 million of an increase, 1.2 was attributable to public assistance, and 300,000 was attributable to the care of prisoners. And while there was a $1.5 million increase in the budget, the actual expenditures only increased by 641,000. Okay.
That, that was things that were done after we knew these additional funds were coming in, we decided to make these other changes in here, correct? Eliminate those positions.
Yes, and I think that, I mean, we've always tried to come, when we are faced with situations, um, try and make accommodations as we go through the year, trying to figure out ways to save money. I mean, honestly, it's been, uh, it's been a trying probably four or five years, not to attribute it. As QSCAB has come along, we've had to get really creative in terms of cutting down the county budget. And what you'll notice is the county budget has gone, um, significantly down. And when those resources are shifted to other places, that's what generally has happened.
Could you explain what QSCAB means?
Qualified school construction bonds for the school. We have a payment of roughly $1.5 million every year in debt service because it was financed instead of, um, historically, our school projects are financed over 40 years. And the QSCAB, because they are interest-free, you have to pay them back in 10 years, which is a very, very accelerated payback schedule. We're in year three, so we have, on the payback, we have seven more.
Where's the jail trending at right this year so far? Is it up?
It is. Our first bill in July, of course, we're very early into the year, but it was 189,000. So it's trending a little bit ahead of what our total budget is.
And I know CSA's is doing the same thing, so they're, they're directly related.
They are.
And that's just.
Mm-hmm. And it's unfortunate because, you know, a great example is trying to invest in prevention or education. One of the things that you end up kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul is you actually have to take away some of the programs that might prevent some of these situations from getting catastrophic and foster care and, and jail. You're, you're basically not able to invest that money in your citizens in a way that can maybe prevent those situations from happening. It's unfortunate, but I, I think it's a national crisis that we're having at this point.
It really is, I really believe it is. Anyone got anything else?
We had a family here who, uh, discussed a road closure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait, we've got citizens' time, just a second.
Okay.
Before we got to that, just sort of to tie in with, um, Mr. Cannon's presentation, I can give you an update on where we are with the tax.
That would be great.
Oh.
Thank you.
Handing out, uh, copies of our proposed advertisement. As of August 10th, total taxes collected, delinquent taxes is $135,013. Total administrative fees collected, $1,020. Total that we've been able to disburse to the county, $74,641.97. Total number of delinquent properties that we're working on is 275. This includes, uh, a, a small amount of, of properties that we'd had from a previous group, um, that we plan on moving forward to sale. Total payment plans, there are 74 properties that are currently in repayment status and total paid in full, 31 properties to date. Next steps in the process are to order advertisement on all the properties not paid or on contract by, um, August 22nd. Any changes will have to be made by August 17th. So if, uh, if we receive a payoff by August 17th, we should be able to edit that out and it won't be advertised in the newspaper.
Okay.
Other than that, we will be, we will be advertising and, um, ordering title work on properties that are not satisfied by that time. Once we've reviewed the title work and ascertained everyone who is entitled to service of process, we will be filing, uh, suits to, for judicial order, selling those properties. And we will also continue to, uh, collect on the contracts and, uh, review the title work as it comes in. And of course, if there are any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer them, but wanted to at least let you know where we are in the process. We'll be advertising and filing suit shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item will be citizens' time. Next item will be citizens' time. And I've got the list already. And the first person on the list is Judy Jones.
I'd like to see my link with my time, Benny Robinson.
Robert Patton. Benny Robinson.
Steve, you look tired, but this is your job. I prepared this, so at least I'm gonna go through it. I was expecting some feedback tonight from the PSA meeting. None coming. And you did a great job. Your talk with Mr. Hilt almost echoes mine entirely, but I would like to say this. And he's very easy to work with and he's very informative. Don't please, please, this is a request and I'm not preaching to you. Don't be encumbered by doing something quickly. I've had two subsequent conversations with him since last meeting, and I can tell you, he has given me some good counsel that there may be a easy way through this, very easy way through it. So I'm not gonna tell you how to do your business. That's your jobs. But anyhow, I just hope we got, we went down a wrong road back in 2008 for some reason, and I think that was expediency. But anyhow, let's not go down the wrong road again. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm Benny Robinson. You know me well by now. I open up with an olive branch from our last meeting toward a suitable end of this non-user fee ordinance, a regulation that is long overdue for repeal. Two things I would like to discuss. Why the non-user fee ordinance needs to be repealed. And secondly, to counter the less than substantive contention that non-user fees are acceptable because we pay for the common good of all the county schools and roads, thus making non-user fees fitting and proper. Last meeting, when I spoke to you about this subject, I told you that I believe that is unconstitutional, not biblical, and unethical. I'd like to extend that conviction. I have been assured that the USDA information pertaining to the mandatory non-user fees as I was challenged on last meeting has since been validated, and I thank Mr. Truitt for that effort. First, to the unconstitutional issue. Research since the last meeting has made me even more convinced. I have adapted this from my study. There are at least three amendments which I believe has language pertaining to this matter, the Ninth, the Fourteenth, and the Fifth. Freedom of choice is a fundamental right. The Ninth Amendment alludes to it, and the Fourteenth Amendment enforces it. The Fourteenth addresses many aspects of citizenship and the rights of citizens. The most commonly used and frequently litigated phase of the Fourteenth Amendment is equal protection under the law. Appellate courts have made note that there are fundamental rights existing before and outside the Constitution. While some rights are enumerated in constitutional amendments for special protection, other rights exist without being enumerated. It is the Ninth Amendment that emphasizes this. If you'll bear with me, I'd like to read you the Section 1 of the Fourteenth Amendment. All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privilege or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property, being money, without due process of law, nor deny to any person without its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws, emphasis added. The Takings Clause of the Fifth Amendment may likewise be something that this body needs to grapple with. This, on the surface, appears to be a legislative taking of property, be it money, without judicial due process. I said this was non-biblical. Simply put, the Bible instructs us not to steal. Merriam-Webster defines stealing as to take the property of another wrongfully and especially as a habitual or regular practice. I guarantee you that none of you would consider yourselves thieves. I consider this non-user fee nothing less than disguised stealing. When government begins taking from people without services or goods being delivered, it is no longer a government of the people. It is no longer a constitutional republic. I said this was unethical. Ethics is defined as the discipline dealing with what is good and bad and with moral duty and obligation. I'll add to that. Doing what is legal may not always be ethical. That comes from many, many years of ethics training that I endured. Just as a little side note, as an affordability issue, this kind of government ordinance is inflationary by nature. As time moves forward, as PSA expenses escalate and debt mushrooms, you'll be obliged to raise non-user fees. It's a never-ending paradox, another reason for repeal. Second, I want to address the anecdotal examples where schools and roads was used as a way of making the non-user fee for the common good, thus passing the county reasonableness test to charge this fee. My desire is to counter what I believe is flawed rationale. All citizens pay for schools, whether we have a child attending or not. We all pay for roads, whether we use them or not. That's factual. However, in the case of these 79 households being charged this non-user fee, they pay their real taxes, they pay their personal taxes, just as everybody else does, whether they have a child in school or whether they use all the roads. But the exception nevertheless is, they pay them, like everybody else does, but over and above, they pay the additional non-user fee, simply because there is a water main in the front of their home and they did not choose to subscribe. This, at best, is void of any substantive logic and to these households, an added monthly budget expense with nothing to gain from it. Allow me to regress for a moment. Earlier, speaking to the constitutional issues, let's make a hypothetical supposition that these 79 non-users all happen to be an ethnic or racial minority. Just how long do you think that would hold up in today's appellate courts? In closing, the non-user fee ordinance must be repealed and never see the light of day again. I thank you for giving me this hearing. Thank you for your hearing me. And I also thank you for your service. But let's also stop disgracing our Constitution. Thank you.
Next is Tim Haynes.
First, I'd like to thank the board for taking time out to hear me tonight. I own a piece of property on Eppworth Church Road, known as 686. And, but there's no abandoned state road left now. So I contacted resident engineer Lisa Hughes, Martinsville, Virginia. She said I need to come to the board and have them to give me that property. My land encroaches it in all directions. I'm paying taxes on it. I've got a surveyor says it's mine, but technically it's not mine. And she said be up to the board and she'll go along with your decision to revert that over to me. And I have maps of it and pictures and anything if you need to see it.
I think we need to have a little more information about what the... Yeah, go right ahead.
Is this, this is a old...
Old abandoned road. It's an old abandoned road that the state done away with.
And you're asking that the board abandon that?
Right, and give it, revert it back to my ownership. My land encroaches on both sides.
Have you filed a request with the county for abandonment? I believe this board has adopted years, years prior, a road abandonment policy.
I think there is a road abandonment policy.
Okay, I was just going to, what the resident engineer with Martinsville, Virginia, Lisa Hughes, informed me what to do. She just go before my board of supervisors.
There's a policy in place that we can provide you, and there are steps that...
Didn't you get a letter that had this explained to you in the letter from my old man?
I cannot remember.
I think you did about eight months ago.
I just need to get it straightened out because that old road, these people wanna park them.
It's a little more complicated than you're making it out. It's not just road issue. It's the access to some of the neighborhood properties. And you may follow the request to abandon the road if you wish, as we told you several months ago. Or you can go see Judge Geesor and let him sort it out, which is actually what I recommend you do.
Okay. I just know, the only thing I need someone to do, I don't wanna be liable when somebody's taking drugs down there and they get hurt being on the land according to my deed. Then I don't wanna be liable for something that somebody else done and I don't even own the property.
Well, that certainly oughta matter a little more.
Then who should I take that up with?
Well, if you have people down there that are trespassing on your land, I'd suggest taking it up with the sheriff.
We've done that avenue also.
Is it evident there is a road still there, or is it...
No, it's, I'm mowing it. It's grass. I'm mowing it right now. It's grass.
The right of way is still there.
Okay.
And if there are others adjoining property involved?
They are joined past this.
Well, this board can't act until their application's been made under the road abandonment policy.
Okay.
So you can either do that, or if you have a dispute with people coming onto your property, then I think the certi- court, talk to label counsel and bring something to the certi- court.
They're going through my other, into my other property. They're going across my property, getting to do this old road, and I've not stopped anyone.
There's really, there's no action that can be taken tonight, I guess.
Okay. So I just need to get the proper procedure paperwork.
Could we get him, print him off a copy of that policy real quick? I mean, wouldn't it be difficult to do that? Ronald, okay? He'll provide you with a copy of the policy.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have Robert Mabe.
My name's Robert Mabe, 111753 Rescue Road. And I agree 100% with what Benny is saying. And I just disagree with the water non-user fee. I don't have a meter. I don't have, no blue hoses sticking up out of the ground or nothing. And y'all keep beating the devil around the bush, not doing anything in the world about it. And this thing's been going on for over 10 years. And it's when it started, and 10 years is a long time. And I was thinking about a guy's funeral went to that day. Nick, he worked here. And I thought to myself, now he's passed away, you know? And y'all just keep letting it go on and go on and go on. Ain't no sense in it. When you know you're in the wrong, I mean, or something, back up and do something about it. You know, if you knock your milk over the table, clean it up, instead of continuing just letting it go on. Ain't no sense in it. And just like the lady read in the newspaper today, you just block that out, you know? Like, you know, we don't pay no mind to that. But it just hurts to think how that you're doing. And I just sometimes think you're trying to put the sewer system in and make it mandatory, like you say that the water system was, but the water system wasn't mandatory, you know? And now you're trying to put a sewer system in there. And I live 10 miles away from here, near Laurel School. I don't even live in Carroll County or within this area. And this guy lives about two mile off of, or about a mile away from B&amp;B Tire. And yet you're not charging him a nickel for water service, but yet you're trying to charge me for it, and it's not right. And I know if it was gonna be y'all's place, you wouldn't wanna pay it either. I don't think it's right. I think it's stealing. And I don't think you should have to pay for anything where somebody is trying to take your money for no reason. And I just appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next item is supervisor's time, and we'll start with you on the end, Mr. Web.
Thank you. First of all, I want, a lot of the people left, but I want to thank people for attending our meetings and bringing these issues to us. I would like to address the last gentleman that spoke, Mr. Mabe, we hear you. And we are working on it. We're not beating around the bush, sir. If you heard our attorney's report, we've got to get to the bottom of it. It was done years before me or most of this board was sitting here. And we're trying to find out what we can do to eliminate that legally. And that's what we're gonna try to, we're not, I know, we can't do it tonight, and it may be another month or two down the road, but we are investigating it, sir. I promise you, I'm on top of that. We are on top of that. We're trying to fix what was wrongly done, if you think back 10, 15 years ago, okay? So please bear with us, sir, please. We're not trying to, we're not trying to cover it up. I promise you that. I would like to thank our staff, our county administrator, our county attorney. Again, I beat, I beat this, I beat this horse to death, but new kid on the block. I started January 1st. A lot of these issues are coming before me and this gentleman sitting here that started January 1st. And we didn't have a clue what was going on, because I wasn't in politics. Lived in Carroll County my whole life and never been in politics. But I will promise you and any of the other citizens sitting in here that I hear you and I'm gonna work for you. And I'm gonna do everything I can to make it right, okay? And again, I want to thank the staff and administrator and our county's attorney. We're facing a lot of issues. Very, very proud to see that report tonight, that we're back on the right track. I think this board in general wants to get back on the right track. We want to get things back better for the citizens of Carroll County. And that's all I've got tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Web. Mr. McGraw?
I want to thank everybody for coming, and I'm sorry you had to come with the issues that bothers you. It bothers me, and I've been bothered with it for years. I don't like the non-user fee. And it's an agreement that was made by previous people, and we're working to try to get out from under it, if we can, without sticking the county with more payback. We'll try to get out from under it the best we can. And I hope we're wise enough to step under stuff like that from now on. Now, thank you.
Mr. Reed?
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Look back what I heard tonight. It's too bad we couldn't run the internet through the water lines. That fixes a whole lot of issues. Of course, right now, the technology is not there. And I don't mean to make, I don't mean to make light of this, but... And we did pass, we passed a public, we'll have a public hearing on it in October. And I hope that gives us sufficient time till we get all kinds of information back from the PSA and from the board and see what we can, you know, we can work out in that area. Because it is, it's a sticker for a lot of folks. And mostly in my district, you know, that's just where the last water lines were done. So looking forward, hopefully, we can solve the problem. And I know, Robert, you've been here ever since I remember fussing about this line. This will go forward from there. Thank staff for everything you did. And I'm tickled here about the financial way it looks at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Dr. Lethal?
Well, it was good to have a room full of folks. And it certainly wasn't liking to have our centrally represented here. And I think, I didn't tell him that, but I've had outage in my home phone twice this summer. The last time went out four days ago, and I was told it would be there on the 14th of September to fix it. So anyway, I'm kinda the same boat everybody else is. to fix it, so anyway, I'm kinda in the same boat everybody else is. And my cell phone is pretty iffy, too. I have to get up on the hill, facing the mimosa tree, looking over at Robbie's house for it works. But anyway, I was glad to see our financial situation is going in the right direction, and I hope Bob continues to recover from his surgery, and McCraw family keeps healing, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
I do want to thank everyone that was here tonight. Rex made a statement a little while ago under his breath, I don't think anybody could hear, heard it, because we can guarantee a full room when we're talking about roads, water, or internet service. So I wish every, I'm really, I love the input we get. I thank Benny for his time and effort that he's put into some of this stuff. If we don't, are not told about situations, we don't know about situations lots of times. As all, as, as much as we like to stay involved with what's going on with the county, if citizens don't let us know, we don't know. I do thank staff for everything that they do, they, they put a lot of time and effort into everything that, that they come across daily. It's not just a simple thing, don't come here and sit here and don't do nothing. They get beat up pretty bad sometimes. And there's something I want to ask staff to do with this smart road thing. The highway department needs to do something about Lammsburg Road. Lammsburg Mountain Road has got to have some attention put on. It's becoming a very high safety issue. Anytime the interstate shuts down, or GPS sends people on Lammsburg. It makes, it's a very dangerous road, if you don't travel it every two or three days, like I do, or Benny does, and it can be very, very hazardous.
Which, which part?
The, the mountain part, I'm gonna say the mountain part.
Yeah. Well, if it's a safety issue, the rules are different, but smart's good.
Well, they've not, the road's not been mowed back, there's trees down along the road encroaching on the, on the roadway side. And, and people won't, it's like anybody else, or I am like anybody else. If I'm going down that mountain, and I meet something, I don't want the crowd over close to the edge, because I don't know how close the edge is.
No shoulder.
You can't see it, the shoulder, there's no shoulder, and I mean, it's just not, and I know that it was made a scenic byway several years ago. And I know when that happens, they don't typically want to put a lot of funds into it. But unfortunately, when 77 shuts down, that becomes a major highway down through there. I don't know if they can go on, go to GPS and have them take it out of the system or not, but something needs to be done, because it does get dangerous. And I've had several people come to me particularly and complain about our parking situation out front. People that visit this, the facility, that come in here and visit the facility. And I, I think that we need to have a committee, the board maybe needs to get a, appoint a committee. Can I do a committee of two without having to do anything, Steve, or, I mean, like, could I form a committee of, say, Rex and Joe Neal, to look into this parking, or something, or?
It is a problem that there isn't enough parking for the citizens.
There isn't enough parking. I think, I think what we're seeing, I think what they're seeing is that there's more employees parking on the front rows, the two front rows.
We don't need a committee, we might just give everybody in a certain spot for further away.
That's whatever needs to be, I mean, there, I know for a fact, because I know the vehicle, there is a school employee that parks on the front, on the right-hand side, on the very front row.
We need places for the county cars, you know, we can figure that out.
Okay, if you can fix that, I would greatly appreciate it. Because there is, there's nowhere for people to park. And that's, I think that's why this area up in front gets so convoluted at times, and so congested, because there's nowhere, nobody to park. Well, you know, and that's, you know, but, you know, I know Social Services, some of their people park up on this first initial road, and maybe designate the front two rows across as visitor parking only, or something, so.
We only park across the street too, correct?
You mean where the drugstores could be?
No, down to the left, is that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that would be a good place for the county vehicles to park, especially ones that we don't use constantly.
Well, I came in the middle of everything, and I just parked over there on the right-hand side.
Yeah, I did too, that's...
Plenty of room over there.
But I'm talking about the citizens who come in.
Yeah.
Another of you moved to county people.
Oh, yeah, I was moving in that way, because there's a lot of empty spots over that way, I do know that, so. I would just appreciate that, some attention put to that. I don't have anything else, I, yes, sir?
It's your road, Jerry, could I have one more minute? See, they've stopped trucks from coming down 52 because of school buses. I'm glad they did, I was all for it. But you realize the beer trucks, the pop trucks, Sarah's Construction, Low Ridge Concrete, McCraw Trucking, all them boys got tractor-tractors. And the only way they can get back across when they've come down the mountain, they've come down 77, the only way to get over 52 for the beer trucks and them trucks to work 52 is Brushy Ford or Flare Gap.
Flare Gap, yeah.
Neither one of them, you cannot hold a tractor-tractor on your side of the road and come through them curves. I mean, they can't do it, there's no shoulder for them to do it, and...
Those are issues that have, have kinda slipped by over the years, and we've not paid any attention to, but they are safety issues that need to be addressed. And I know that secondary roads don't get the attention that a lot of the major roads do, but if no one has anything else, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion for adjournment to me.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? This meeting's adjourned.
Sir?
I was figuring out.
Crystal?
Crystal.